One o'clock PM, I'm going to officially call this work session. Durham City Council's support for the purpose of favoring discharging this to the people of Durham. His honor, Mayor Williams is traveling, he's in the United Kingdom. On city business, we send him best wishes and probably watching. Safe travels back to us. I also want to welcome our staff, my honorable colleagues for supporting my staff, all of you in room with us today, on whatever platform you may be watching. Beating on, I want to welcome who's sitting in chair. A number of our principals are out there. Our city manager is out, so are very capable, very capable. Bertha Winblith is sitting in for us. City attorney is out as well, so we welcome Attorney President Horn, who's very capable. Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, would you please follow along?
Certainly. Mr. Mayor is out, and he has received an excused absence for the meeting. Mr. Mayor Protam?
Here.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Caballero?
Here.
Councilmember Cook?
Here.
Councilmember Freeman?
Present.
Councilmember Rist?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chair's opinion quorum is present. We will proceed. I'm going to now yield to my honorable colleagues for any announcements they may have. Councilmember Cook, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Just want to say thanks, everyone, for being here. I don't have any announcements this morning, this afternoon. That's where we are.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Baker, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, and good afternoon to everyone who's here. No comments for me, but I appreciate everyone who's in the room today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Caballero, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everyone. No, I have no comments. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Freeman, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, no comment.
Thank you, Councilmember Rist. Any announcements? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor Protam. Good to see you, Deputy City Manager, Deputy City Attorney. It's great to see everybody here, great to see all the folks in the room and staff. I do have a couple of things. I'll break the, break the, uh, break the, the, the chain here. So a couple of things, just so, um, early, I know we had a late meeting on Monday, early Tuesday morning, as we often do, Councilmember Caballero and I got up early to go to the, uh, Triangle West Transportation Planning Organization meeting. So a couple of things there I just want to let folks know about. One is that we did adopt the Triangle West TPO Safety Action Plan, which looks a lot like the Vision Zero Plan we've adopted in Durham. And I think it's worth saying that, you know, a lot of our colleagues around the region were wondering what that plan means for their communities. So I'm proud that we've already adopted a Vision Zero Plan in Durham. And as we did, as we talked about when we adopted it, that plan is going to commit us going forward to key investments in those key corridors that are, that are part of the high injury network. So I'm glad we have that plan. We'll be making those investments over the long term. The other thing, we, we also did hear a presentation about this kind of, uh, long-term plan called the Metropolitan Transportation, uh, MTP, Metropolitan Transit Plan for 2055. And just one thing to note is we looked at some of the data that, that the researchers are looking at, and it does show that we are planning to grow our total jobs by 90% by 2055. So virtually doubling the number of jobs we have in our, in our, in our community in Durham. We're also planning to grow our population, or expected to grow 48%, almost 50%, from about 310,000 people to more than 450,000 people by 2055. So I know in this current climate, it's so, it's easy to focus on just the president and some of the real challenges we have in our economy and so forth. But the long, like, seeing the long haul, the long-range plan, the, the long vision, we're going to be growing a ton, both jobs and people. And so, you know, our efforts to get denser and to accommodate more people is going to have to continue because the, the data shows, long-term, we're going to still be attracting a lot of, a lot of people. So stay tuned for that. The last thing I want to note, um, oh, I want to thank Downtown Durham Incorporated for hosting an event yesterday where they released their, um, uh, they had their State of Downtown Durham event, but they also rolled out the Downtown Durham Blueprint for 2020, 2035. There's a lot of exciting stuff in there, um, addressing some of the retail gaps in downtown, downtown placemaking, activating alleys, which is some cool stuff. The idea of a commercial trust to make sure we preserve some of these smaller commercial buildings that if we don't have a, some plan, could get eaten up as, as big developers come in to, to, to gobble up those buildings. Um, there was talk about master leasing concepts to try to activate some of the, some of the first-floor retail downtown that's not being occupied by some of the bigger tenants. So some ideas there, and also looking at, of course, redoing the downtown loop by changing some, some of the key intersections there. So exciting stuff. It's why Downtown Durham Incorporated has asked for a seven-cent bid tax for that tax estate, the same as we go through reevaluation. But there's also some planned investments I think they may come back to the city on. So if my, my colleagues just want to, for all of you to stay tuned for that. I knew Councilmember Cook was there, and Councilmember Caballero also at the event yesterday, so. Oh, Councilmember Freeman was there. I didn't see you. Thanks for being there. So there's more to come there, um, as we continue to, to like, encourage our thriving and vibrant downtown. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam.
Thank you, councilmembers, for all of your announcements and non-announcements as well. I'm going to, uh, at this time, yeah, I have none. I'm going to yield to our executives for their priority items. First, I'm going to ask, yield to the city manager for any priority items he may have. Good afternoon, Madam Manager.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protam, members of council. The city manager's office has one priority item, agenda item number 13, proposed water and sewer rates for fiscal year 2025, 2026. This item has a presentation, and we have allotted 30 minutes for the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Uh, Madam Attorney, good afternoon. I'm sorry, Mr. Attorney, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, uh, Mayor Protam, Middleton, and councilmembers. The city attorney's office does not have any priority items today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Priority items?
Mr. Mayor Protam and city councilmembers, I have the Boarding Committee report. Citizens Advisory Committee appointment for the general seat is Albimamola Alarode. The Board of Adjustment nomination is Brian S. Godfrey. And the final Environmental Affairs Board for Durham County, City and County, appointment is Karina Barnett Loro. And that's the end of the report.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, at this time, I'm going to read, uh, into the record our consent items. Any of these items can be pulled by any member of the council or any member of the public for a deeper dive. And I'll say, now, I'm, I'm struggling with allergies today, so please excuse my voice if it cracks a little bit. Um, priority items, administrative consent items, pardon me, from the city clerk's office. Item number one, Citizens Advisory Committee appointment. Item number two, Durham Board of Adjustment appointment. Item number three, Durham City/County Environmental Affairs Board, Affairs Board appointment. Uh, under departmental items from the Human Resources Department, item number four, Temporary Staffing Services On-Call Provider List. Item number five, Contract with GovernmentJobs.com Inc. for software to manage job recruitment and applicant tracking functions. Under Parks and Recreation Department, item number six, 2025 Durham Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Park System Plan. That item has been pulled by a number of our neighbors. Public Works Department, item number seven, Contract ST-341C, Carver Street Extension SCMS. Item number eight, Contract ST-338C, Petition Assessment Services. Item number nine, Contract ST-335C, Pavement Management Services 2025. Item number 10, item number nine is pulled by a number of our residents as well. Give me. Item number 10, Contract Amendment Number One for SW-96PW Street Maintenance Repairs 2024. Under our Technology Solutions Department, item number 11, Contract with CDW Government LLC to purchase CA Inc. licenses. Item number 11 is pulled. Under our Water Management Department, item number 12, Construction Award to Moffett Pipe Inc. for the NC-54 Waterline Replacement Project. Item number 13, Proposed Water and Sewer Rates for FY 2025, 2026, 30 Minutes. That is a presentation slated for 30 minutes. Under presentations from our Parks and Recreation Department, item number 14, Presentation on the Proposed Durham Central Park Concept Plan. That is a presentation slated for 30 minutes as well. Now, public hearings for our upcoming Monday meeting from the City/County Planning Department, item number 15, Consolidated Annexation Howard Property. Item number 16, Zoning Map Change, Strauss Drive Townhouses. And Citizens Matters to be heard at 1:00, we have several Citizens Matters. Uh, that ends the reading of the published agenda for today. By my reckoning, we have items number six, nine, and 11 pulled. Do you concur, Madam Manager?
Yes, I concur.
All right, thank you much. At this time, friends, we'll turn to our Citizens Matters to be heard. Citizens Matters to be heard at 1:00. I'm going to welcome our neighbors who are here. Here, Ayesha Abdul Ali, James Chavis, and then Chris Perelstein. Are they in room with us, or are they virtual today? Okay. Is Ayesha here? Good afternoon, ma'am. If you'd approached the microphone and just turned it on, we're glad you're with us. You'll have three minutes. Do you see a green light? Madam Clerk, could you help him out, please? Do we need to get a?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry. Thought you were just a helper. Good.
Okay.
Thanks so much, ma'am.
Thank you. Good afternoon to, well, I have passed around a letter, and I thought it would be much easier if we just read aspects of the letter. I'm not used to talking for just three minutes, and so perhaps this will help. My name is Ayesha Abdul Ali. I'm the CEO and, um, the Consultant Strategist for Summit Environmental Resources. I'm here today to support the initiative that was started several months ago by PAC 1 and 5. And this is an, an initiative to make Durham climate change disaster-prepared and, and also to make Durham the number-one city in the state of North Carolina and possibly the number-one city in the country in disaster preparedness. And we recognize that disaster preparedness has not taken a, a big stand in the city of Durham. We have not seen a lot, lot of momentum in that direction. But we recognize also that climate change is an issue that we must deal with and we must give a lot of attention to, especially on the community level. And I can say that because my hometown has just been devastated by Helene. And although I have been in the environmental sector for over 35 years, I have, to see it in your hometown is different than seeing Katrina or some of the other storms. And that devastation is something that I don't wish upon anyone. And I hope I will never have to see it again in my lifetime. But I also recognize that we, as a community in Durham, we must, we absolutely must get into the climate change disaster preparedness and make sure every home understands the strategies of evacuation, sheltering in place, understand the legalities of all of the things that's necessary for them to continue their lives even after a storm, the storm passes. So I want to support that initiative. They asked me to conduct some training classes, and our corporation said yes. In Durham, we are taking it upon ourselves, if the PACs want it, and so far, it seems like their constituents do want the training. We are, we have trained, uh, community people from PAC 1 and PAC 5 and also the senior center. We are reaching out to PAC 4, PAC 2, and 3, and we will do the same thing. And this is our way of giving back to Durham.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
For being with us this afternoon.
All right.
Thank you. Mr. Chavis, I guess, good afternoon. Good to see you. You have three minutes.
First of all, good afternoon, each one of you all. Thank you, Ms. Ali, for coming. Because she helped open our eyes up for something I know in PAC 1 has been trying to get done for many, many years. And our city council and everyone else has been ignoring it. I'm asking y'all to stop waiting until something happens and help us to put your boots to the ground before something happens. Our next meeting, you may, you may get a copy of it. It's Tuesday, May the 6th, at 6:00 to 8:00 at Holton. And our June meeting is June the 3rd, on the Tuesdays, from 6:00 to 8:00. Come with your ideas, your suggestions, and I only saw one representing the council member at our first meeting. And that's a crying shame that the rest of y'all won't take time. If she can take time, then the rest of y'all should be proud enough to help her to find out what's really going on and what's really need. Because when something happens, everybody's going to start pointing their fingers, and no one wants to give a count of it. So let's not let Durham be behind. Let's put Durham beforehand now. You got the opportunity, and you got, well, the county has already, as you all may believe, we presented proclamation to the city, county, and the school board. The county, in three days, gave us an answer. I have not heard from the city council, and I haven't heard from the school board. That shows you who's ready to help us. So I'm asking y'all, if you're not going to do it, just state it. If you are, let's get it on, because we're not stopping. This committee is not stopping. We're going to continue on, but we need your support and your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chavis, for being with us. Chris Perelstein? Good afternoon. Thank you for being with us. You have three minutes.
Thank you, city councilmembers. This past Saturday, we had a scary close call involving four pedestrians. I hope all of you have seen the video of this. In case you haven't, it starts with multiple vehicles failing to yield to pedestrians in a crosswalk. Anyone who lives in this area, and probably throughout the city, can tell you that this is a normal occurrence in our city every day. Uh, eventually, an SUV yields in the nearest lane. The speeding car in the far lane, uh, screeches to a halt, ending up in the crosswalk with the pedestrians having to jump out of the way. Adding insult to injury, or, or worse, was that the SUV that yielded was a sheriff's deputy vehicle. They just left the scene without any attempt to stop the offending vehicle after this. I do want to take a moment to point out, because there's been some confusion and accusations towards, uh, the city police on the internet after seeing this video, that this was a sheriff's deputy vehicle, not a city police vehicle. We've seen the city police checking out speeds on Roxborough and in other places. And I've, um, requested speeding ticket data from them. They've been consistently increasing their efforts. They're writing triple the tickets, the speeding tickets, that they did pre-COVID in 2019. So they're definitely doing the work, trying to make a difference. But for context on how big the scale of the problem is, I capped that many speeders in daylight hours going more than 50 miles an hour with a speed limit in one week, for the total number of tickets that they write in a year. I thank the police for their efforts, but I think we've got to face the problem that that enforcement is not going to be a broad solution to this. The following day, after the pedestrian incident, on Easter Sunday, we lost three people in a high-speed wreck on Roxborough Street. This brings the total deaths this year on Roxborough Street to five, just on Roxborough Street. And we're not even to May yet. That number is more than 10% of the total road deaths we had last year. And we haven't even talked about the number of injuries that we've had on our high injury network. These didn't show that we can't simply enforce or educate our way out of this, but we need engineering solutions. This is exactly what Vision Zero will get us if we actually do it. Unfortunately, we haven't yet. We have done some safety and quality of life improvements that I appreciate, but our numbers are still going in the wrong direction. We aren't addressing our most dangerous and problematic streets. You've taken the first steps in setting a goal, hiring a coordinator, and approving the action plan. But we'll need to take the next step of actually changing these streets. You can facilitate that by ensuring that projects to make these streets safer are a high priority in our budget. I hope that one thing we will take away from these tragic incidents is a renewed sense of how important this work is. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being with us, Mr. Perelstein, and to all of our residents and neighbors who came out to speak to us this afternoon. All right, we have a caller online. So I don't have my, um, hold up, Ms. Wagstaff? Is, is that who it is in queue? All right, good afternoon, Ms. Wagstaff. Can you hear me?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, ma'am. Good, good afternoon. Thank you for being with us. You have three minutes.
Okay, um, I'm coming to you today about an issue that's reoccurring on Dakota Street. The street that runs parallel to Shepherd Middle School, a historical school in this community. Um, I did research on this. We have 18-wheelers that are now using this street, this residential street, as they're parking, where they park their trucks now. And I contacted the planning department, and I was instructed that they're not supposed to be on the block, but we have to call the non-emergency number and have them send out a police officer to either check at these vehicles or have these vehicles removed. Well, I'm just going to tell you right now, I don't know who's answering that non-emergency number, but it's trash. Because when you call it, you get grilled as though you've done something wrong, and you never get any resolve on your issue. They grill you, they want to know where you live, they want to know where the issue is, and you're trying to give them as much information as possible, and you get nothing in return. And I don't know what's going on with Durham PD, but we're not getting anything. But we have these trucks, and I've taken video, I've sent it to Councilwoman, Councilwoman Freeman, I've gone on social media, trying to get some resolve. We have people that are renting residential properties in our neighborhood, and they're running commercial businesses out of those residential properties, and they have two and three box trucks. So we have a combination of 18-wheelers that are parking using our street, right here at the school, as a parking, as their parking venue. And then we have box trucks that are parked all on Elmira and all on Dakota. It is, it is a serious problem. And I know for a fact, if this was called Crowsdale, all we'd had to do was make one phone call, and this would be resolved. And this makes no sense, because we have a school here, and I watch it every day, where we need speed humps, we have cars speeding down this street. Nobody's going 35 and 45, they're at least 65 and 70. We only have one sign that makes reference to there's a school on this block. And something has to be done over here. I don't know what it's going to take. At this point, I'm at my wit's end with this, because I've done everything that this city requires us to do, and we're getting no resolve. So I guess we have to do like everybody else, go to Channel 5 and get Troubleshooter or somebody to come out and just put the whole city on blast. But right now, we need the city officials to come out to Dakota Street in the 2,500 block and witness what we witness every day. And that's all I'm going to say on this matter at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being with us today. Madam Clerk, is there anybody else in queue? Okay, thank you. All right, colleagues, that, I think we've exhausted all of our citizens matters today. Again, thanks to all of our, our residents and, and neighbors who came out today. And just by way of a reminder, you can come out to our Thursday meetings at 1:00 PM. Um, sign up in advance to speak on, on any issue you want, uh, to the council. And we thank you all for being here today. Colleagues, I'm going to go down to our pulled items. We have several, uh, neighbors who want to speak on item number six. And I'm just going to read, uh, the card, the names of the cards, the names on the cards that I have. And, uh, if you're here, if you would just proceed in the order in which I read your name. Dale McKeel, Chris Foster, Melvin Talbert, Katnarna Reher, and Mike Gallagher. All right. Good afternoon to all of you. You'll each have, uh, three minutes.
Good afternoon, um, Mayor Protam, Middleton, and councilmembers. My name is Dale McKeel, and I'm here as a member of the Recreation Advisory Commission. Um, at our last meeting in, in early April, we adopted a statement, and I want to read that statement. Uh, first off, we are asking for you to support the adoption of this plan. Um, but also, as I said, I want to read this statement. Um, we, we, we want to strongly support, uh, the Half Penny for Parks and Trails Fund and emphasize the importance of the increased funding from the, uh, recent property tax adjustment. Since its establishment in 2015, the Half Penny for Parks and Trails Fund has played a crucial role in addressing deferred maintenance in Durham's parks and trails. This dedicated funding has helped improve safety, accessibility, and overall park quality, ensuring that our community has well-maintained spaces to gather, play, and stay active. However, despite the progress made, the backlog of deferred maintenance remains substantial, and additional resources are necessary to keep up with the growing needs of our parks system. The increase in funding made possible by the property tax adjustment is vital in tackling these critical maintenance projects. Without it, aging infrastructure, trails, and outdated park facilities will continue to deteriorate, impacting the safety and usability of these spaces for Durham residents. Additionally, as we take on more projects to improve our parks, we must also invest in the staff needed to manage these efforts effectively. Skilled, skilled professionals are essential to overseeing maintenance, coordinating upgrades, and ensuring that these projects are completed efficiently and to the highest standards. Durham's parks and trails are not just recreational spaces. They are vital to public health, environmental sustainability, and community well-being. By sustaining and increasing investment in the Half Penny for Parks and Trails Fund, we are committing to a future where all residents have access to safe, high-quality outdoor spaces. We urge you to continue prioritizing this crucial funding to maintain and enhance the parks and trails that make Durham a great place to live, work, and play. Thank you for your time and continued commitment to investing in Durham's parks and trails.
Thank you for taking the time to be with us today. Chris Foster? All right, good afternoon. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Um, I'm coming today to speak about, um, Elmira Park and especially its tennis courts. And, um, the tennis courts represent, I think, a fantastic opportunity for the city. First, um, the courts are in a tremendous state of disrepair. Councilwoman Cook came out to the courts to meet with us and to inspect the courts. Um, there are cracks and there are weeds growing on the tennis courts. Um, so they're in a state of disrepair, and then there's an opportunity to, um, fix them and to make them up to standard with the other courts in the city. Um, it's a great opportunity because the tennis courts are a tremendous asset to the city for at least three reasons. First, the courts, um, and the users of the courts include a group of African-Americans who continue the legacy of blacks playing tennis in Durham. For a long time, and I won't get too much into the history, African-Americans were not allowed to play, um, with their white counterparts. And so in the middle of the last century, um, through the Algonquin, uh, tennis, um, facility and other communities in Durham, there was a great, a group of people who played tennis, including, um, John Lucas is one of the greatest tennis players, um, in the ACC um, in the, uh, late 1970s. So there's a, a legacy of African-Americans who use the court. Um, every weekend and every Tuesday and Thursday, there's no other, um, group like it in the Triangle area. We formed a group called Magic Express, and we always use the courts. The second, um, component that makes it a tremendous asset is the exceptional teaching that is done there now. There's, uh, a, a coach named Coach Kabiru and others who train tennis players who go on to play tennis in college. Um, it's unbelievable. And third, some of the best adult tennis teams in the state use the court, um, through the USTA leagues. So there's a tremendous diversity of people from all over the Triangle area who come to Elmira to use the courts. Um, it's just a, an, an amazing asset that should be celebrated and supported. Again, through the, the African-American community who continues the legacy, um, through the exceptional training that's done there, and through some of the, um, fantastic, uh, leagues, um, uh, who, who use the courts. Tremendous diversity. So, um, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for being with us. Melvin Talbert?
I also want to say something about Elmira Tennis Courts. I've been playing there for over 40 years. There's a group of us that play on Tuesdays and Thursdays. We play league tennis. And, uh, Elmira, all the other courts have been surfaced at least, um, Southern Boundless has been resurfaced three times since the last time they did Elmira. Other courts have at least been resurfaced twice. But it's been so long that we have craters in our court. You know what I'm saying? Literally, craters in the court. So we're just asking for help, the, you know what I'm saying? Because they do play league tennis. I mean, it's, the park is being used every day. I mean, it's, the park is being used every day, every single day. You know what I'm saying? Some high schools, when they have their tennis, they'll come out there and play during the day. So it's being used. We just need some support to have it fixed. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being with us. Kat Narna Rahir. Good afternoon. Thank you for being with us. You have three minutes. Feel free to correct me if I butchered your name.
It's Katerina Rahir, but thank you. Poor Kat. I'm gonna read it off my phone so that I don't miss any points. I'm a small business owner in Durham and a member of the Durham Parks Foundation. So both personally and professionally, I care deeply about the health and well-being of our community. That's why I'm here today to speak in support of the funding of the Durham Parks and Recreational Budget, including the continuation of the Half Penny Fund and the requested capital improvement projects. I see every day how vital, accessible, safe, and high-quality parks and recreation services are. Whether it's a mom recovering from an injury while a child plays safely on the playground or a teen finding mentorship on a basketball court, these spaces are lifelines. The data backs that up. A recent study conducted by, or excuse me, a recent survey conducted during the development of the 2025 Durham Parks and Recreation Comprehensive System Plan showed that Durham residents want to invest in the look and quality of our parks. People notice and value clean and safe, inclusive green spaces. Considering the budget, studies show that well-maintained parks are linked to decreased healthcare costs in nearby neighborhoods. That means funding DPR isn't just good for the community, but it's also fiscally smart. The capital improvement requests aren't just bells and whistles. They include vital upgrades, making our large community events safer, replacing outdated playgrounds so all kids can play together, upgrading courts where youth and adults stay active and connect. This isn't just about leisure, it's about wellness, public safety, and environmental health. Our parks are gathering places, places for reflection, movement, learning, and healing. So I'm urging you as a resident, business owner, and board member, and someone deeply committed to the city, to support the full funding of the DPR's proposed budget. Durham deserves it, and I truly believe the investment will come back to us in stronger communities, healthier residents, and a more connected city. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being with us this afternoon, Katerina. Mike Gallagher. Good afternoon, sir. Yeah, you'll approach. You'll have three minutes. Thank you for being with us this afternoon.
Thanks. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Mike Gallagher. I'm at fifty-nine oh five Solitude Way in Durham. Others have spoken on the topic of the Elmira Tennis Courts. I'm here to do the same thing. I'm gonna confine my comments to the physical situation. They've already talked about history and usage. So Elmira Park sits in a bowl from the surrounding neighborhoods and there's all sorts of drainage down toward it. The water there has never been dealt with properly. So we ask that when the scope for the rehab of these courts, which I understand is on the docket, that include a professional drainage system beneath the courts. You know, piping and landscape tile to make sure that the water flows beneath the courts and out into the nearby stream. Currently, the water just ponds underneath, forces the courts up, they crack. Water seeps through. It's a mess. So we wanna make sure that whatever budget gets approved, it includes that drainage system. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you so much for being with us. Madam Clerk, would you see if there's a Cynthia Perrin on in queue virtually?
No, Mr. Mayor Proton.
All right. I've exhausted all of the cards that have been given me on this item. Colleagues, do you have anything on item number six? If not, we'll move to item number nine. All right, seeing none, thank you all for who spoke on this item, to our neighbors who spoke on it.
Appreciate all the tennis comments as always, so thank you, your residents.
See, I see a good friend, A. McCoy, avid tennis player sitting in the gal. Good to see you, man. Absolutely. You don't wanna play him. Item number nine, he's the one, eh? Item number nine. Oh, go short, go ahead.
I just wanna, just wanna reiterate what I saw there tracks with what the folks were saying, but I do have some photos and I'm gonna share them with my colleagues so that y'all can see exactly what they're talking about. Thanks.
Thank you, council member. All right, colleagues, item number nine, Dale McKeel. Good afternoon. I know you. Thank you for being with us. You have three minutes.
This item, I'm speaking for myself, not on behalf of any other group or organization. But I'm here talking about this contract, ST three-three-five-C Pavement Management Services. It's my understanding that this contract includes inspection services for resurfacing projects. And over the last couple of years, I've had some concerns about the, about some of the recent resurfacing projects and the way the, the way they were managed and some of the problems that I saw with them. The first concern had to do with pavement markings. So it's my understanding that these inspectors work with the pavement marking company to make sure that the lines were put back on the street in the proper place. They have a pavement marking plan that they work from. They're supposed to follow that plan. Well, when Martin Luther King Parkway was resurfaced back about a year and a half ago, the pavement markings were not put back in the proper place according to the pavement marking plan that the Department of Transportation prepared. And for example, the pavement marking plan was supposed to provide a three-foot buffer between the bike lane and the, and the motor vehicle travel lane to provide extra safety for bicyclists. Well, in some places, that buffer was only like a foot or a little over a foot wide. And so it was just, you know, all over the place. It wasn't consistent. And, you know, unfortunately, you know, I actually saw the temporary markings were not done correctly. I contacted the city about that, but it still wasn't corrected. And they put the permanent markings in and then city staff said, well, we can't fix it now. And so, you know, if you've got an inspector that we're paying almost three million dollars to do this, it seems like, well, there's gotta be some accountability. So I'm asking you to make sure there's some accountability in that contract. The second item has to do with so-called pavement preservation projects. I know the city's been doing a lot of that and I understand the need for it. But with some of these projects, and you've probably seen it yourself, on Briggs Avenue, Martin Luther King Parkway, Barbie Road, Woodcroft Parkway, Meridian Parkway, the pavement, within just a year or two after the project has been pavement preserved, it starts peeling off. And it's, I mean, it's not just little bits and pieces, it's large chunks that are getting, that are peeling off of the road. And I've got some pictures of this I will send to the clerk to distribute to you all. But, you know, again, this shouldn't be happening. And that the contractor, I mean, I don't know what went wrong, but something must have gone wrong if this is happening within a year or two after a resurfacing project. And again, my understanding is that the city and the city's taxpayers are the ones responsible for making most of these repairs. And again, if we're paying a company to provide these inspection services, basically to be the city's eyes and ears, they should be accountable. One last thing, I apologize. I want, I would like to know whether the company that is being offered this contract has been involved with some of these previous projects.
Thank you so much for being with us this afternoon. Appreciate you. That's all, it's the only speaker I had for item number nine. Colleagues, any wanna chime in on, uh, Councilmember Cook?
Yeah, I would actually, I would love a staff response to those three things. First of all, if these companies, this company has been involved in inspections previously, if we're, hi, Ms. Johnson. I see you're coming up.
Staff, are you prepared to respond today?
Good afternoon, Tasha Johnson Public Works. I can respond to most of them. I, so yes, two of the three I can respond to.
Go for it.
So this is the same consultant that we have used on previous projects for inspection and project management related to our, related to our pavement management program. The second question I can respond to is that we are aware of the concerns and the stripping that has happened on Barbie Road, Briggs, and the other locations mentioned by Mr. McKeel. And we are monitoring those. We do not believe that it is a workmanship issue. We think there are some subsurface conditions that were not readily evident when we put down the treatment types. So we are monitoring those and we are adjusting our selection process for use of the treatment on future projects.
Great. And then if we could get a follow-up maybe on, on what was going on with the buffers and why that, if the, yeah, that was indicated before the permanent markers were put on, why, why those buffers weren't changed or why they are inconsistent?
Yes, I can provide that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Rist?
Thanks, Ms. Johnson. Yeah, I know there's been a back and forth sort of email communication. I guess my one question, and thanks for your responses here, and thanks for Mr. McKeel for raising these. My, my question is like, what, in the case, if there were workmanship that was not proper, like what is our recourse as a city in that case?
If there are workmanship issues, then we address that with the contractor and we seek a resolution that minimizes the cost to the city to do the repair.
So that's, so there's provisions of the contract allows us to do that. We have that. Okay.
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, council member. Anyone else? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, item number eleven, that was pulled by Councilmember Cook. I'll yield.
Good afternoon, Dwayne Kendall, Assistant Director of Technology Solutions.
Good to see you. I have a few questions. They might be relatively quick. Can you just back me up in a historical context? I know that obviously we're changing from a, we're switching over from a software license that was relatively similar, both PD and TS shared that licensure. Is that, has that historically always been the case? And if so, can you explain why those two departments and not other departments are sharing?
Yes, great question. So what the traditional licensing structure was because of the data center. So the police department is the secondary data center to City Hall's data center. So all of the departments, servers, data infrastructure are all on both of those two data centers. So when we're saying license structure for PD and for City Hall essentially, we're talking about the whole organization. They just are in two physical locations.
Okay, that is helpful. Thank you. And has it, is that new with the building of the, of the new department building? Or when did that?
So, so we merged the, as part of a, an amazing efficiency and cost-effective initiative to kind of merge buying multiple, having police buy a presence and then City Hall buying a presence. We were able to leverage the technologies to give us a better cost increase and more efficiency from those licenses. So we did that merger about the time that Police Headquarters was stood up. I mean, before then, we were, they were running a semi-data center. We had the City Hall data center and these efficiencies just cost-efficient and better all the way around.
Okay, thank you. The memo talks about the normal data center refresh cycle. I don't know anything about this, so I was hoping to give me a little background, but I also am interested in knowing if five years is like the standard amount of time or what that normally looks like.
Yes, I'm glad you said that because the, the refresh cycle for the hardware, which coincides with the, the software with this particular thing, VMware, is usually a five-year cycle. That is industry standard, about a five-year cycle. The challenges we face are that this one may be one of the last on-premise hardware refreshes for a data center since most of these technologies are moving their workloads to the cloud. So this one, we anticipate possibly being the last, you know, hardware that we, we went from a giant mainframe in the, in the data center to, you know, what we have now in racks and servers. But we anticipate this being one of the last ones that is physically on-premise, so.
That is helpful. And then I'm, I'm interested to know how that corresponds with the resizing that is needed and if moving to the cloud will impact that resizing.
Yes, that is a great question too. So the resizing exercise that takes place, some of it is, as those workloads move to the cloud, environmentals are affected, so we don't have to cool as much data center. The network security is affected. We have a different security posture for the cloud versus on-prem. There are a ton of different things that go into the exercise of sizing. Some of it is data at rest, how much space we're taking up versus how much data is actively being used. So we're, we're going through all of that analysis to make sure we get the most efficient and effective possible way to manage the data center.
So it sounds like those things might decrease.
Yes, but the challenge is that always with data center technologies, we're moving from the capex model to the OpEx model. Everybody wants to sell us recurring cost services. So we wanna make sure that we size it correctly so that we're not investing heavily into the recurring cost component of it too. So we're, we're working all that analysis.
Thank you. Those were my questions. Thanks, colleagues.
Thank you, council. Thank you. Anyone else, colleagues, on this? All right, thank you. Good to see. We've exhausted all of our pulled items now. We'll turn to our presentations for the afternoon. The first one is proposed water and sewer rates for FY twenty-twenty-five to twenty-six. Now welcome our team from our water department.
Good afternoon, Mayor Proton, members of council, Don Greeley, Department of Water Management. I'm here today to talk about the proposed rates for FY twenty-six. To lead off, I just would like to give a shout out to my staff for all of the great work that goes into preparing the rates every year to put all this documentation together. I also like to thank, I see Ken Flores here and the Finance Department. They play a major role in preparing the rates with all of that financing for the, for the rates. And a shout out to also with Reptellus Financial for, for, for working with both Water Management and the Finance Department in preparation of the rates, so. Thank you. All right. Trying to advance the slide. Yeah.
Not sure, but it's. Sorry.
All right, sorry for, sorry for that hiccup. A brief utility overview to give everybody a, what we're dealing with. When we talk about the rates, it's also funding, of course, the water and sewer utility that serves all of the city of Durham, as well as a good portion of Durham County. We maintained four plants, two water, two wastewater. We maintain over twenty-six hundred miles of water and sewer lines across the city, as well as have over hundred and six thousand water accounts that we bill annually. Our general outline, similar to what we've done in previous years, we'll talk about our rates, objectives, and key issues, followed by the capital program because that's a significant driver for our rates. Look at our customer consumption and then look at the rates proposed for next year, as well as some comparisons with other cities. As we have it in the past, we have three tenants with our rates, our objectives. Is affordability being first and foremost with our rates. Second is sustainability for the utility to make sure we can address long-term operating costs and our long-term capital needs, as well as water efficiency and conservation. We continue our tiered rate approach to promote conservation and look at our, how we can keep the three lowest tiers to a minimum with our long-term financial model. When it comes to affordability, of course, we've initiated programs to assist our low and fixed income customers. We can, as I mentioned, we continue to use our ten-year financial model to look at our operating cost capital programs to ensure that we don't have rate shock with our customers and to minimize the rates for our tier-one, tier-two, tier-three customers. And of course, the tier rates empowers customers to manage their own costs by how much water they use. Projections, looking back the previous years into what we're projecting forward. And as I've mentioned in leading up. And as I've mentioned, um in leading up to this year, uh the Jordan Lake project is going to have a significant impact on where we go with our rates because of the size of the project. It's a generational type project, probably approaching by its um at the the way inflation is going. We expect that that project to cost, when it's all said and done, closer to a billion dollars. Because that's not just the project itself, but it's also the water line improvements within the within the utility that will have to to bring that sixteen-point-five-million gallons a day to Durham, but this will give us water to grow as a city through 2050 and maybe 2060, so. But as you can see for the rates, we're it's, we are now moving out of preliminary engineering and into design and preliminary construction over the next several years. The intent to have those facilities online by 2031, so you can really start seeing the impact of of that project. But as far as affordability, you know, we continue to work closely with our customers. When they experience issues, we have uh payment plans, payment arrangements. Whenever customers have concerns about being able to pay their um pay their bills, um payment plans, payment arrangements allow us to take payments over a couple of months or to move a payment from one day to two weeks from now or to spread payments around depending on their financial situation. For the hardship fund, um we uh the the city dedicates a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars annually to help customers out who are experiencing issues with their bills. So far, um this year, um but uh over a thousand households have taken advantage of that and almost a hundred thousand dollars. Earlier in the year, we were trending much higher, um but that unfortunately, um I hope for our customers have have trailed off. So um we were projecting in the first quarter that we'd be up coming back for maybe doubling that amount, but um things have settled down a little bit with our customers, which is, I think, a a good sign to our community. But we continue to work with those customers who experience issues. Um, as far as our long-term strategy, of course, we utilize the our ten-year financial model, looking at all of our costs. We want to minimize um any rate increases and spread those out so we don't have rate shock. We need to look for, as I said, the Jordan Lake allocation to meet our future demand as a city. We want to s- smooth our borrowing out and um we want to maintain um our debt to the benefits, our rate payers, not necessarily the high-bought renting that we have. The capital program, which is a major driver of of the rates. In general, we look at funding program programs to maintain our dams, our treatment plants, our water and sewer collection systems. Work towards building uh utilizing our allocation at Jordan Lake and Tier Quarry. Implement new regulations. We have PFAS regulations that we're having to meet. Up upcoming rules for falls and Jordan Lake rules as far as water quality. We have to look at our development needs and make sure the infrastructure is there to allow for Durham to continue to grow and to continue to fund efficiencies in our operations. And I'm going to touch upon some of those as we come along. So major impacts to the CIP, um of course, the cost over the last four years has been significant, both in consultants and in construction, where overall costs have increased almost eighty percent. Hopefully, that'll slow down in the in the next few years, but I think I said that last year and costs continue to rise. But hopefully, um we'll see that in in the next couple of years or going forward. Um, another kind of impact was the city of Sanford um merged with the town of Pittsboro and also Chatham County with their utility, so this impacts the Jordan Lake facility. So originally, um both Pittsboro and Chatham County were going to be participating with the Wausau and Durham in the Jordan Lake project. But now, since they've merged with Pittsboro, that that's kind of changed how much participation that they might have initially with the Jordan Lake project. So we're still finalizing that, but um we are getting close to finalizing all of the governance agreements between all the parties to make sure that um although the city Durham might be footing a good portion of the bill or a majority of the bill for building those facilities, that we ensure we get our money back as they tap into their allocation and use the facilities that we constructed. Design and construction times have have grown um as well. Typically, um, you know, all of our projects now are taking longer. The the especially the the design firms are stressed because there's not as many um staff that the firms have, so they have a limited capacity compared to what they were about eight years, ten years ago. Um, and also the same on the construction industry. There's not as many um this human resources in the construction industry for projects. So we're seeing less crews come on our linear projects. So uh for our larger projects, they just take longer, so. As far as the projects themselves, um we have the Lake Mickey and Little River facilities. You know, on we have the current ongoing project to rehabilitate both the the original pump house of Lake Mickey on the right and the Little River Pump House on the left. We're about halfway through that four-year project, that eighty-five-million-dollar project. We're about halfway through. We are uh continuing with our design to um address the uh the issue with the east or the northern wing wall on the Little River Reservoir, which you can see with the red arrow there. And then we have an upcoming project to um take care of um the concrete degradation on the Lake Mickey Dam, which is shown in green, that's programmed in over the next five years. Tier Quarry is is also, you know, a quarry that the city owns. We'd like to bring that online as a both a um emergency supply and as a daily um use for drinking water. Right now, we're in the design stage, but we should expect to go to construction in the next two or three years. The Jordan Lake Project, of course, is building a new intake on Jordan Lake and Chatham County. A new uh raw water pump station to pump it to a brand-new uh water treatment plant down at there and then seventeen miles of water line back to the city of Durham and two area elevated water tanks along the way. So we hope, as I said, we'll be um, we're in the process of advertising the first progressive design-build contract for the treatment plant within the next week or so. We'll be advertising that. Because of the size of that contract, and um we've, over the last year, we've had several um open houses with engineers and contractors to make them aware of the contract uh that's coming up because it's over a four-hundred-million-dollar contract, as well as open houses with the the local businesses and minority companies, underutilized businesses, to make them aware of the of the upcoming contract, construction contract, and how they could potentially participate in that construction project. Part of our um, you know, rates continue to recommend three cents per tier um for water quality protection. This is a map of Lake Mickey. Uh, we have a passive program to buy buffers, to buy land in and around Lake Mickey for buffer protection, as well as um long-term uh water supply project of uh replacing Lake Mickey Dam maybe in about fifty years with a new dam and maybe twenty feet higher so we can have the next water supply project. It's also the the three cents per tier is also used to um uh supply land purchases and easements dedicated up in the watershed itself. The CIP also includes projects at all four um plants, both the Brown Water Plant, the Williams Plant, North Durham and South Durham, as we meet um ongoing rehabilitation needs for all of those plants. As far as your distribution and collection system, we have uh several large projects that are in play over the next five years. The the green is, of course, downtown. That's complete. The yellow is Durham Central Park, and that was complete. The red is American Tobacco Phase One, the solid color. That's complete. We just are out for bid. Is American Tobacco Phase Two, um which is from Blackwell kind of east. The West End Project and around Lion Park, um we'll be advertising the first of the several phases of that project in the next couple of months. And the Eastern Project is getting ready to bid the next phase um of of that project as well, so. And then, of course, the west up in the left-hand corner of that graphic is the West Club Project that's under construction right now. As far as development, another portion of the CIP is dedicated to improving the infrastructure in and around the city itself. Out in the southeast part of the uh community, out in the um south of ninety-eight, north of US seventy, which we call the Southeast Regional Lift Station Basin, you can see all the development that's going on there there now. Several years ago, the city created the Searls Basin to be able to recoup the costs of building that regional lift station and force main that would pump back to the North Durham Plant. That has all been constructed. The force main Phase One has been constructed. And then we have in the CIP, the second half of the force main that would pump the the uh wastewater all the way to the North Durham Plant. So that's underway. In the southwest part of the city, um the infrastructure there, we have several large lift stations that were built prior to the South Point Mall, so it was the old comp plant that was built. So a lot of those projects, a lot of those infrastructures is undersized. So we're we're currently finishing design on on those and we'll be releasing those projects for construction shortly. And we also have numerous projects to serve, to upsize the both the water and the wastewater collection system in and around the greater downtown area to be able to meet the future growth of the city. We are um finishing our long-range water resources plan, which has been tied to the city's comp plan. Councilmember Rist mentioned in his comments to start off with the meeting just about how much this community is going to grow. And we've, his the numbers that that he expressed were consistent with our long-range plan. So um all of that, um we have to continue to look at our infrastructure to make sure it's, we have that capacity in advance if we're going to continue to see that kind of develop. As I mentioned, we also use the, we fund efficiencies. We're completing our bio-solids master plan. We're completing our electrical study. We're real excited about um having a fuse fellow um fellowship starting in a few weeks. This fellow will be looking at the energy consumption at all four of our treatment plants to see how what we can do, how we can sub-meter, how we can monitor the electrical use within our um facilities, what type of equipment is um could be replaced, maybe to be more energy efficient, and also look at potential other energy sources um that we can use, solar. That work will be tied in with the bio-solids master plan to better use the methane gas that we generated at our wastewater plants to generate electricity um to offset our carbon footprint. Another project that we have slated is um the Miss Lake Facility, as as our fleet continues to be electrified, is to actually build the infrastructure in the rear of the facility to be able to supply the the trucks and vehicles to be able to recharge them as part of the Miss Lake Project. We um built all the conduit underneath all of that concrete, so we don't need to tear up the concrete. We just need to, we're working with General General Services and their staff to be able to bring a project forward to build the infrastructure to have the charging all throughout that parking area. We're also, you know, continuing to look at moving from AMR, which is automated meter reading, radio reading, to AMI, which is you can read meters from the desktop as opposed to having people drive by in the neighborhoods. So we're looking forward to that. We continue to update our SCADA system, which is our operating systems that are all over our treatment plants. And we continue to look at our cybersecurity needs and work closely with TS on that. Some of the major projects, I'm not going to read them all, um but here are just some of the projects I've mentioned that we have going on right now across the utility. How that looks, as I said, there's some, the numbers have gotten really big um with the increased construction cost. So um projected out, it's almost two billion dollars over the next five years, with half of that being the Jordan Lake Project. As far as usage and consumption, I think this graph now kind of shows where the trend that we now see a trend, if you look, if you think back on how much Durham has grown since two thousand. You know, we experienced uh two smaller droughts in two thousand and two and two thousand and five, and then the major drought in two thousand and seven. But Durham has continued to grow significantly during that time period, but the water consumption has been relatively stable. A lot of that has to do with all the new construction coming in with very efficient water fixtures and water use, all of the commercial and industrial users becoming more knowledgeable about water consumption and how they can be more efficient. A lot of the existing homes and businesses replacing their fixtures and putting in more water-efficient fixtures, so. But now, as we can see over the last couple of years, we can see as Durham has grown, we're starting to see a steady increase in our water consumption. So I think uh we'll probably see that over the next couple of years is what we anticipate. Um, as far as our single-family residential tiers, um pretty stable um over the last ten years as far as where the consumption is, forty, almost forty percent of our customers are in the tier-one. Thirty, almost thirty-six or thirty-five percent is in tier-two, thirteen in tier-three, and then we have seven percent in tier-four and only five-point-six in tier-five. So as I mentioned with affordability, because of we have such a large base in tier-one, tier-two, tier-three, we're really concerned about making sure our rates are affordable to those three tiers. As far as the rates proposed for next year, the overall utility budget is a little over a hundred-and-sixty-million dollars for next year. Twenty percent goes to operation and maintenance, thirty-one percent for personnel, twenty-nine percent for rate funded CIP, and twenty percent for debt service. Projected out, here's, as you can see, the the debt service um will grow if we continue on the trend of where we are without changing the capital program. The proposed rates, um we'll, we're proposing modest increases in both the service and consumption charges and across all the tiers. Continue the watershed protection fee. Customers will continue to see different rates depending on how much water they use. We do, of course, the the rates target um, you know, people conserving. They can save a lot of money if they can just conserve their water consumption. Continuing on tier-three with the commercial multifamily resident, uh multifamily, presidential, industrial and institutional customers. Continue with the double rates outside the city limits, and of course, those customers who are tributary to the county plan are subject to the rates that the county establishes for uh their treatment. The rates cover our operating budget, any paper performance increase for next year. Our employees, the Pago Funding, which is um roughly almost thirty-nine million dollars. The debt service, which is about thirty million dollars. The Fleet Replacement Fund for the utility vehicles, um the General Fund Transfer into the General Fund for all the services that the General Fund provides to the utility. And of course, the watershed protection, uh three cents per tier. It maintains the necessary debt covenants and as well as maintains our adequate operating reserves for the utility. As far as the charges per se, you can, this is a table about the increases. I'm not going to read them all. There's an eighty-one, eighty-one cents for the service charge for water and eighty-nine cents for the service charge for um sewer, as well as um the charges there increases on the various tiers and a forty-five percent increase on the volume charge for wastewater. The impacts to our customers, so a typical tier-one customer, which uses about a hundred-and-eight um cubic feet of of water, um will increase about two dollars and forty-one cents on a monthly basis. So their their bill will go from twenty-eight seventeen to thirty fifty-eight. And then the other two, the typical um customer within each tier are shown accordingly. We we've stuck with water and donuts again. Not, we didn't go back to ice cream, so. But, you know, this is a a comparison of what that means to our customers. So um for a tier-one customer, if if they would buy one less bottled water, they could offset the the you, the increased costs on their water bill. And as the graphic says in the right, on the left, excuse me, one gallon of water costs, you know, point oh-oh-five-six per gallon. The impact to our smaller commercial accounts, the five, the five H and five H-inch meter for a commercial account is going to increase seventeen dollars and seventy cents, so. Overall, we're proposing uh an eight-point-five percent increase, which is a much larger increase than we had predicted last year, but our costs continue to go up, um with eleven-point-two-five predicted out, probably not just. with 11.25 predicted out, probably not just over those four years, but probably the next five years after that. Currently be just because of the large cost of the capital program. Comparing our current rates with our neighbors, this is a graphic from the UNC Environmental Finance Center. This is, this particular graph is, shows utilities across North Carolina of similar accounts. So it's of any utility that has more than 25,000 accounts. So comparing our, that first dial in the upper left-hand corner, the average of all the larger utilities across North Carolina is about $86.32. And our 4,000 gallon consumption is only 65.35. So pretty good compared to all of the larger utilities across the state. The lower right-hand corner is with affordability, our rates from the finance center, the utility rates should not go over 1.2% median household income. And we're at a little over 1.1%. So which is good. There we are. Pretty strong conservation signal up the right-hand corner. Maybe not as strong as some, but we're kind of right in the middle. If we look just at the, within our area, within our council of government, we compare much stronger with our average typical rate. Not as strong as our conservation signal. A lot of the smaller utilities have a really strong conservation signal in order to save, encourage their residents to conserve water consumption, especially during the summer. But still pretty good with larger utilities. In looking at the larger utilities across the state and the average, you can see we're just slightly below the average. Most utilities are proposing an increase this coming year. And I think we align pretty well because we're the only utility that's building a brand-new treatment plant in the next couple of years. With that, any questions?
Thank you for your great presentation. Colleagues, we'll open up now. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Freeman, yes.
Thank you, just one in particular. Just around the cost recovery conversation. How do you, I guess, how do you develop, I guess, I could, how do you develop like a cost-sharing model in that? Like, because it's post-construction, how does that work?
Right, we're looking at how we, our new construction versus the infrastructure that we have to replace.
Well, specifically for the conversation with Jordan Lake and I guess putting in the infrastructure so that they can pull the water from there.
Right, that's, as I mentioned, we're setting up the governance agreements and those will be coming to council once they're finalized. But we're, right now, we're finalizing them. We expect to have those over the next couple of months to have, for you to look at, look at those. As I said, the, we are working closely with the city attorney's office, as well as the finance department, in putting those agreements together, as well as they're corresponding with all of the other entities, attorneys and finance departments as well, to make sure that those agreements are pretty solid so we can, Durham can recover our costs.
Model for how you develop, I guess, the actual calculation?
The Raff tell us does that for us. I can provide more detail to you. Be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Colleagues, Councilmember Cook and then Councilmember Baker.
Thank you for that presentation. I have a few questions, I'm just going to go back through. The first one I want to go back to, I heard what you said, but I'm just going to go back to it again, which is that we have set aside in the hardship fund $150,000 for the year, and we have already used almost 100,000 of it. You've seen decrease in rates, but we haven't hit the summer yet, really. Why do you think that those rates are going to continue to decrease? And what is the?
As I said, it's not so, the request for hardship funds has dropped off.
Right.
As I said, in the first four months of the year, the first quarter to the first four months of the year, it was trending to look like we were going to need maybe $300,000 for the year. That started to drop off near Thanksgiving and Christmas, which is unusual because usually we see in the past, we've seen kind of an increase come January, February. And we just haven't, that just hasn't happened this year. I'm not sure why, maybe because we've been, I would like to think that we've worked hard to, work closely with our customers about having them understand how we can do payment arrangements and how we can help them out, move around, connect them with some of the community organizations that help also with people who are struggling. A number of local churches are willing to contribute to pay the utility bills, as well as the Salvation Army. So I like to think our efforts have made an impact there. But, you know, this is the first year that that's happened. Usually we've trended pretty solidly across the year. So it's, it's kind of, we're in a different spot from where we've seen in the past, but.
Is that 150 number going to stay consistent start of the new fiscal year? Or have y'all requested more money there?
I think if we were trending more, we would, we would request that that be increased at the start of the year. Council in previous years, when we've seen that money, we've seen the need for that continue. Both the city administration, as well as the city council, has been, I mean, able to increasing that. But I see Tim standing up, so I'll defer to Tim.
So Tim, floor of Finance Department. And so what we started doing last year is we started accumulating that, those hardship funds. So any excess funds from the year prior that have been budgeted, we're rolling into sort of a fund. And so like, right now, I think our cumulative balance is close to about $400,000. And so if it starts trending in that way, then we have time to address it in a future budget cycle.
I was actually, the slides that we have don't match exactly the slides that you gave us. So there's like quite a few that are missing on ours. So my first request is that your whole presentation be uploaded.
Absolutely.
And then I was wondering if you could go back to the utilities, utility efficiencies slide? Because I just, we went through it kind of quickly and I don't have it. And I wish I had looked at the time, but I didn't. So I'm so sorry. I know that was the title of that slide. Yeah, yes. It was.
No, it's 21.
Yeah, right around the major projects list. Oh, yeah, thank you, yes. Okay. Thanks, I just didn't, I know you had talked about a couple of them before you got to the slide and I just wanted to make sure that I knew all of the things that are on there. But I think I do. I think I know all the things that are on there. Okay, thank you. So I'm going to move down to the $2 billion number figure, which I'm sure everyone's really excited to talk about. Okay, and you said half of that money is going to be, is going to be, what is?
Associated with the Jordan Lake project.
So that is to get the allocation?
Is to, all that work entails is to build the brand-new intake on the lake, build a raw water pump station to pump the water from the intake to the new treatment plant. Build 17 miles of 42-inch water line back to Durham, two new elevated storage tanks along the way, and about $100 million worth of improvements within our system, existing distribution system, to be able to push that water out across the whole system. Probably, right now, we're looking at creating another pressure zone because the different pressure that the water's coming into our system is different than the pressure zone that we have. And that's to, we looked at what, as part of the preliminary engineering, we looked at the cost of how to, you know, equalizing the pressure so we don't have to do certain things. I'm not going to get in a lot of great detail, but that was looked at of what was the most energy-efficient way to pump the water back into the, to Durham.
Yeah, okay. I have a couple of questions, Tim. I don't know, I mean, you might need to be on standby too. But what other, I guess, like what other financing have we thought about? And do we need to be thinking about a bond or something around those lines? This is a huge chunk of money. I'm not really sure where it's going to come from.
Yeah, these are utility revenue bonds. And so this is the traditional way of financing those.
Right, but these, our numbers haven't been quite this big in the past. So I'm just curious, have there been, yeah, what does it look like as it continues to grow?
Well, I mean, for a utility system this size, and this is a generational investment, we, those are being built into all of our financial models that we've been, you know, presenting to our rating agencies. And so there is an awareness of what our growth is going to be. And so it, I mean, while it's large, it is manageable with, within the infrastructure that we have, financial infrastructure that we have.
Yeah, I guess I'm looking at like, not only the growth, which I feel like is normal, but also we're looking at all these increased costs for a variety of reasons. And that includes like weird economic things that are going on, tariffs and that, geez, that sort of thing. But also, you were talking about like all of these construction costs that have increased. But all of that is within.
And just understand that we really do look at utilities separately from all of the other debt that we issue. And since these are sort of paid for by user fees, it is all within that. So it's not tax-supported debt that we're issuing.
Okay. Did you want to follow up on that?
Yeah, please.
It's why on one of the slides, it says that we don't look at, like whereas the city really wants to maintain AAA rating for its general fund stuff, it doesn't matter if this dips a little bit because that's not the goal. So it's just a different financial strategy because it's its own contained universe. Yeah. The water universe is different than everywhere else.
Got it, okay.
I did want to mention that we are working with the city manager's office to engage our lobbyists, to engage the general assembly, to participate in the intake that we're building on Jordan Lake because it is a, number one, it's the only other intake that the Corps of Engineers is going to be allowed to construct on the lake. And it will be used by multiple entities. You know, from a long-term perspective, it'll be Durham, Owasso, and Chatham County, the town of Pittsburgh as well. So we are going to be engaging with them to see if we could have some participation in that part of the project from the general assembly. They've shown support for projects in and around Chatham County. They funded $30 million for the upgrade of City of Sanford's treatment plant as a grant in kind with no payback. So, so we're going to be hopefully pursuing something similar to that. Although that's a small amount of money to the cost of the project, it's still, that's a lot of money.
We'll take any money.
We'll definitely take that.
And can you talk about the allocation? I know that that is going to be, end up being a revenue stream for us, but could you also talk about the combination? I know that we've talked about it before, but I just want to go over it again so I understand when the town of Pittsburgh and Sanford combined, how that impacted us.
The biggest way it impacted us is because Sanford has, because of their expansion, they had additional capacity at the plant. So initially, Pittsburgh was going to ask for a larger portion of their allocation in the initial construction, as well as Chatham County.
Okay.
So, but because they merged with Sanford, and Sanford will be able to provide some of that relief, some of their needs in the short term. They don't need as much in the initial investment in the plant.
Oh, okay, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
But they have, from a long-term perspective, they have a very large allocation with, from Jordan Lake, and they'll be needing that, they'll need that allocation to continue to grow.
And, and that is, at some point, once we get our huge investment with all of the things that you just talked about that we are going to need before we can actually utilize it, we will start getting an income based on our ability to, based on our access, right?
Correct. Once they start.
Other municipalities pay for us to.
Right, so we'll be the contracting authority that if, you know, for Tri Rivers, which is the City of Sanford's utility, you know, they would be reimbursing for their portion of the construction initially. But that's why the governance agreements are so important to establish that because we're looking to recover our costs, our debt service, and then the interest that we're carrying on that money for whatever time it is until they utilize that infrastructure that we've constructed.
And then.
Yes.
Partnership.
Councilmember, choose your microphones, please.
Could you also just explain to me what a conservation signal is?
That's how, I'll give you, an easier example is for Owasso. During the summer, their rates almost doubled. So that sends a very strong conservation signal in the rate because during the high demand, you're paying almost double in water. So that's a very strong conservation signal. Another way is we send a conservation signal because we have the higher cost for the higher tiers. For Tier 4 and Tier 5 are much higher than the lower Tier 1, 2, 2, 3. So that sends a conservation signal that if you're going to use a lot of water, you're going to end up paying a lot of money.
And I know.
Hope that answers your question.
Yes, that is helpful. So we broke down the tiers by population. I know we, 40% in Tier 1, 35% in Tier 2, et cetera. Did we have a graph that broke down the amount of usage of those tiers?
There's a, when you looked at the, let me go back if I can get there. On the graph that shows the, it's a bar graph that shows how much cost per tier. At the bottom, it shows what the typical customer within that tier is consuming.
Yes, I see it, okay. And so that is a typical customer, but do we know? Okay, so then I would multiply it by my percentages, is what you're saying?
Right.
Okay, that's the average.
But we can, if you'd like the range for each tier for that customer class, we can provide that.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I could probably do this math, but I would love for you to provide it for me.
We'd be happy to do that.
Cool, thank you. Those are my questions, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Baker.
Thank you for your presentation to us. So you mentioned we're going to be pursuing partnership, not partnership, but money from the general assembly in the form of a grant?
That's what we would like to pursue.
Okay. Are there any, is there any state financing or any programs to help cover the capital costs, particularly especially around Jordan Lake, but anything else that's out there that we currently have or that we are going to be pursuing? And then is there anything at the federal level as well?
There's both, but that is, those usually aren't outright grants. They're loans that you pay back. And you look at the rate versus the rate that we're getting for our revenue bond sales. So we work closely with Tim and his team in the finance department to see which is, if all of a sudden the cost on the revenue bond side was more significant than what we could get on the federal side, then maybe we would shift pursuing that. But right now, there's not any outright grants. It's more loan-based.
Okay, no grants from the federal government and no real grant programs at the state level other than just requesting?
Correct. For some of the smaller programs, there, we, you know, recently, we got the million-dollar grant from the state dealing with the new lead and copper rule, where that was 50/50. So 50% was forgiven. We have to pay back 50% on that million-dollar loan. But for projects in this area, there aren't any.
Is it, do you happen to know if that's fairly typical across the United States or across the South? Or are there other states that might allocate more resources for grants toward water infrastructure?
I'll be happy to research that and get back to you. I don't know that off the top of my head.
Thank you very much.
But I think we're very similar to most states.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Riss?
Thanks, Mr. Greeley. Just a couple of questions. First one, back to this kind of conservation signal. So that, again, the tiers are based on consumption, right? And the higher tiers are paying a higher rate.
Correct.
So for customers that want to reduce their water expense or their water bill and want to move to a different tier, is it clear to residents which tier they're in? If you get your bill, I was just talking to Mr. Miller at lunch today about that. It's not clear to me that people get that on their bill, do they?
We don't separate it on the bill. We do have a, on the website, if customers want to pursue that, we have a kind of a rate calculator so they can put in their water consumption and then look at how their water bill is built. Because if you're a Tier 5, we don't build all the water at Tier 5.
You build the first one out of Tier 1, and they, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's like.
And build out. So especially for those customers. So, especially for those customers who may be right on the line, if they can look at, you know, hey, if I just, if we just lower our consumption a little bit, we might be able to drop down one tier. So, but that is online.
It's, it's the calculator on the water management website?
Yes.
Okay, and you, you put in your, you look at your bill, how much you consumed the last month, and put that in there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that tool. Um, the second thing is, you mentioned under major projects, you did mention PFAS is one of the things you're thinking about. I know there's another contaminant that a lot of communities are worried about, the one for deox, dioxin, right? Is that something that we're worried about in Durham, or is that not a concern here?
Uh, that's part of our ongoing look at all of those emerging contaminants, and as well as the regulations. So it's in, we look, um, it's part, it was part of our study for PFAS. It's also was part of the preliminary engineering work for the, what type of treatment plant we needed to build, um, at Jordan Lake, as well as all of the new regulations that we're currently aware of, and how, how to treat those, and what type of processes. So the overall footprint, the master planning for this facility has been done, not just to grow from a twenty-million gallon a day facility to a sixty-six-million-a-day facility, but also to add processes to address those emerging contaminants. Because we will have to add additional processes to be able to do those when the regulations come.
Thank you, and then the last thing is, um, you, you mentioned, right, as the overall, a key part of the overall CFP strategy is this, the whole, the, the rules piece, both for Jordan and Falls Lake, the rules compliance, right?
Correct.
Um, and I just want to mention to my colleagues, we, we are right now in the Jordan Lake One Water Coalition, are going through a strategic planning process, sort of, because that, the Jordan Lake One Water, as you know, Mr. Greeley, is not as far along as the, the UNRBA Falls Lake, yeah. So we're going through a strategic planning process, and I, I'm working with Michelle and, and, um, Mr. Loprefado and, um, and Stormwater to figure out the right time to come back to city council, just to give you an update of where we are with that strategic process. Because we're part of a coalition, that coalition helps us, right? Because we, you know, having more folks going to the general assembly to, to negotiate these rules is helpful to us. Um, and we're one of the bigger players in JLO, so it's kind of a, yeah, ongoing conversation. So we'll bring that back to the council when it's time to, for you all to sort of just get a sense of what that plan looks like and what our role is in the ongoing Jordan Lake work, so. Yeah, thank you so much, great stuff.
Thank you, councilmember. Colleagues, anyone else? Any questions or comments? Uh, Councilman Cabir?
Sure. Yeah, I just want to say briefly, thank you for the very thorough presentation. Um, and I know that this is something that Durham is, is kind of known for at this point, is our, um, our philosophy on how we do water management, and we also have really, really good, great tap water, so you don't need to buy bottled water. You can just turn on your tap and use great Durham city water. And I want to thank, um, I've seen a, a real commitment to not using bottled water, uh, recently in city hall, which is a longstanding rule, but a lot more commitment to following that rule. So I want to thank all city employees who are following our rules of not using bottled water, because again, we have amazing city water, thank you.
Thank you.
Here, here, to that. Colleagues, anyone else? Are you sure? It's a work session, all right. Mr. Greeley, thank you so much, good to see you. I think I've said to you before, the next time you bring a graphic in here with donuts on it, and don't bring donuts, we're gonna have a problem, so.
So don't, staff, remind me, please.
Yeah. You think, we, you think, we're, you think we're playing with you?
All right, no, that's, I'm, that's noted.
Thank you so much, Mr. Director.
Yeah, I won't bring bottled water, though.
All right, colleagues, we have one last presentation, where you've been sitting for an hour and a half, are you all right to press forward? Do you need five minutes? All right, let's, let's take a, uh, bio break, we'll reconvene at two forty.
I should have checked earlier, but I wanted to make sure our presentation.
Oh, well, how are you? Are you, are you, I'm giving your presentation, yes?
I'm waiting, I'm waiting.
Waited, okay, and this is his presentation? Okay. Do you know how to do another screen share on Zoom? All right, okay, we can just click on Zoom, just click on share, and you get into Zoom, choose your presentation. You shouldn't have to do what I'm doing right here.
Okay.
What is this accessibility setup system? Microsoft wants to update something, great.
That's ready to go?
So you're ready to go?
Okay, sure, we're nice. I try, just use the.
Up here behind you, or over there, up to you? Okay. No, I'm not going at all, I was just. Just, I'll stay out of sight. I know, I went out too, I didn't see where it started, and I thought about texting him and being like, just wait to watch your face.
We were an extra.
Yes. Just to make sure it was on the screen, right? We had a CD chart at Raleigh that we would pass around to everybody that showed which scenes to sit in, if you didn't want to be on. I didn't notice it when it started.
Two-minute warning, two-minute warning, friends. One minute, if we'll start together. All right, friends, it's two forty, we're back in session. We're going to proceed now with our final presentation of the day from the Parks and Rec Department. Presentation on the proposed term Central Park Concept Plan, one of my favorite shows.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, members of council, Wade Walcutt with your Parks and Recreation Department. Uh, thank you for the opportunity. I just want to make sure, uh, council recognizes what this item is, and what's in front of them, and their obligations, and, and, uh, what they're not obligated to do at this time. So in front of you, this presentation is just a conceptual plan for the Central Park, for our Central Park. Uh, you may recall, similarly, a, a long, uh, work session, uh, a couple of weeks ago, uh, just like today, at the end, we did a very long presentation for our comprehensive park system plan. This concept plan for Central Park is a part of that plan. So this won't be a standalone item come, uh, May fifth for the actual council, uh, meeting, this is a part of that. So we wanted to break this out of the comprehensive plan, one, because how long our presentation was last time? It was around forty-five minutes, and it was a lot of information for you to listen and observe, and absorb. Uh, and so, second of all, this just had a little bit more detail than the rest of the plan, so we wanted to make sure we gave it enough time and attention, uh, so everyone could understand. So this came to be as we looked at our ten-year comprehensive park system plan, and we knew that our partners, uh, the park managers with Central Park, uh, Inc., were also envisioning what's the future of Central Park. And so we were lucky enough to have those timelines aligned, and so we wanted to work together, and we wanted to bring that into the fold. So this, of course, is one of Durham's parks, and this is a concept plan that was not done in a silo, but done in partnership and collaboration between our department and, of course, uh, Durham Central Park, Inc. And so to talk you through this conceptual plan and show possibilities of the future, will be our friends, uh, back from McAdams, um, they'll be here again to talk through the details. But just as a reminder, this will be a part of our overall comprehensive park system plan. Uh, so I'd like to introduce Swayda, that I believe you're gonna be walking us through the actual presentation.
Thank you, Wade, good afternoon, Mayor Protem and councilmembers. It's a ple- pleasure to be here today and excited to share with you all the, um, vision plan for Durham Central Park. Um, as Wade said, uh, this is part of the overall comprehensive, uh, system-wide planning efforts. So wanted to start off the slide presentation with the guiding principles that we, you, you saw at the last meeting that we have incorporated in the overall plan. Uh, the first one is fairness first. So Durham Central Park really is a showcase park that will provide the recreational amenities for all residents and all ages, um, in Durham. The DPR is rooted in the community. Durham Central Park, similarly, uh, went through a robust community engagement process, and all the voices were heard in the, um, concept plan that you will, uh, see today. Foresight, uh, Durham Central Park Vision Plan, again, is the forward-looking vision. This is already a beloved park, very well-used, and we want to make sure it continues to do so in coming decades for the new generations and the new people who are moving here. Bull City Great, Durham Central Park, again, is a really unique destination, recreation place for the city residents, and we want to continue to, um, see that vision and uniqueness in this destination. And then finally, the stewardship. This is one of the unique destinations, again, um, that showcases the urban nature. So we want to create opportunities for people to connect with nature, as well as, um, have a refuge space for the urban wildlife that lives in this area. So just a quick snapshot of the project process. Uh, we went through pretty rigorous, um, site inventory and analysis process, really understanding the opportunities and challenges that exist on this site. Community engagement, that, that we'll dive through that process in a little bit. And through that process came up the guiding principles for the plan. Uh, we worked with, um, Durham, uh, Central Park, Inc., very collaboratively and very closely with them, um, to understand, uh, what they are seeing the opportunities are and constraints are on this site, um, and develop the concept plan for that. Uh, went back to the public, shared the fi- the final concept plan with them, had a presentation with the RAC, uh, group again, and got their feedback. And then finally, we are here today to, um, share that plan with you. So just a snapshot of all of the, um, engagement that went on. The highlight was a three-day intense charrette process that we went through in the beginning of the project. We had several focus group meetings, uh, topic-specific, as well as general board meetings with Durham Central Park, Inc. Uh, we had several site visits with different, uh, subject matter experts. Uh, we had two open houses in three days, um, to share the concepts with public, had intense, uh, day-long design charrette with various, um, interested parties, also had pop-ups at, uh, Durham Central Park, where we connected with children and got their feedback in the process. And so, um, just the next image will show you, um, the culmination of that three-day charrette, um, how everything came together, and we got the feedback from everybody that, um, resulted in three concepts, Foster of Dreams, A Creek Runs Through It, and Eat Play Love. Um, so we presented these three concepts at, uh, open house to general public, got their feedback on these, and, um, the Foster of Dreams and Eat Play Love, um, got the highest two, uh, voting from public. And the preference was to combine those two concepts to come up with a, a third, uh, combined concept to move forward with. Um, from that engagement, uh, the, the seven framework ideas that came out to be are on this slide. The first one is, um, connecting that, uh, extreme western edge of the park that is currently, um, a little bit isolated because of the Rooney Street, uh, which is also an essential fire exit, emergency exit-needed road. Uh, but want to connect that, um, area to the rest of the park, um, enhancing everyday use of this park. The Farmers Market is a great highlight for this park, that sees hundreds of visitors, um, every weekend for Farmers Market, as well as concerts and other events, um, so want to make sure that, that operation runs, uh, smoothly in that space. Um, open up the connections, so these three parcels of land, uh, seem to connect to each other more holistically. The Imagine the Mount Merrell, which is the, uh, existing playground area, it is very well-loved. Lot of kids play here every single day, and we want to see what future opportunities exist as it starts to age and start to see that need for improvement. Um, leveling the lawn area, right now it is extremely sloped, and that limits its use for the public. So how can we create some, um, leveling in that area and create more opportunities for people to socialize and, um, lay on the lawn, put a blanket, and have picnics? And then lastly, creating an accessible, uh, dignified overlook from the eastern side. Um, as, so currently there is no ADA access from that side of the park. And so this part, this, uh, plan looks at that opportunity, how we can create that, uh, entry feature. This is what the overall, uh, proposed concept plan looks like. So I'll walk you through the plan from, um, left to right. So let's take a look at the, um, leftmost or the western side of the park, uh, which is all of the gardens that currently exist on the site. It's a really beautiful space, lot of mature canopy trees in here, and, uh, some walking paths. Um, so this plan really, um, focuses on enhancing this area, creating more, um, readability in the landscape where people can walk through and meander through these landscaped areas, how we can create an entrance, um, up north, um, along Corporations Street, um, and creating that entrance gateway from up north, uh, into the, into Durham Central Park. And then future connect, greenway connections and destination connections from that, uh, end as well. Um, as I said earlier, this area currently lacks that, um, connection to the rest of the Durham Central Park. So this concept really tries to focus on how we can bring it back and connect it to the rest of the site. Um, so you will see some terracing options in there, um, as well as some meandering, um, open areas that can be used for group gatherings. Um, lot of people use the pavilion right now, um, during the day where they are practicing, um, certain things, and, um, the, the open space that's out there could also be used as an extension where small performances and concerts can happen. Uh, moving to the next parcel, which is the Farmers Market Pavilion.
I'm sorry, uh, Verk, on this graphic is Festival Street permanently closed? I'm sorry, good, uh, very, on this graphic is Festival Street permanently closed? Or is that ad hoc kind of closing and opening for?
Uh, yeah, I, I will get to that in just a bit. So let's walk through the farmer's market and then we'll move to the Festival Street.
Just didn't understand the lines.
Yes, yes, you're right. Um, so within the farmer's market area, um, again, this is a very well-functioning space. Uh, the only, okay, um, the only area, um, that is up north in that, uh, where the sister city's Grove is, is a little, uh, is minimally used. So in this concept plan, um, our, our plan will be to enhance that space, create more of, uh, socialization, picnic tables, opportunities to put tents, uh, for vendors, and just activate that space more. Um, in addition to creating more clear circulation for vehicles that are coming in for farmer's market and the pedestrian movement within the space, um, just creating more readability in that landscape. Uh, so more, less, less interventions in this area, just enhancing that space. Then the next.
That's, that, that, that's the canopy plaza you're talking about.
That's the Canopy Plaza, which is the sister city's Grove currently known as, yes. The next piece is the Festival Street. So the idea of Festival Street again is, uh, creating an event space when it is needed. So the plan is not to close this street completely. Um, we had some discussions, the staff had some discussions with the Transportation Department, and they're concurrently looking at that functioning of the space. Our goal is to connect these two parcels, uh, more, um, and create more safer space for pedestrians to go from one space to the other. Um, but the plan is, um, this street will only be closed within the extents of the Durham Central Park limits. Um, during those event spaces through collapsible bollards where you can still access it for emergency vehicles and, um, if needed, our ambulances. Um, but other times of the week, this space can be open for vehicles. We will also incorporate some traffic calming devices in here, so mid block, mid-block crossing with either, uh, raised mid-block crossing, rolled curbs. Um, so some of those details will be figured out, um, as we go through the details. Um, another option could be, uh, a different pavement pattern. So vehicles can see that you are entering a pedestrian dominant zone. Um, so those strategies will be figured out in, uh, collaboration with the Transportation Department. Um, but the idea is that it will become a shared street in the future for pedestrians and vehicles and will have the ability to close off when needed. Right? So moving on to the, um, eastmost parcel, which is the largest parcel of the site. Um, so here is where you will see we are creating a more, uh, clear entry path from Foster Street into the park. Mount Merrill currently is shown as it is. Eventually it will be, um, re-envisioned as a new space and expanded play space so that the Mount Merrill version two, there might be an interactive water feature of some kind that can be incorporated. And then extending that area to the natural space that exists with the creek. And how can we create more of that, um, nature play, uh, element for kids and families and, and, and experience the urban nature in this area? So the whole space can become of a play environment for the entire family. Um, in, um, conjunction with the, uh, stream, uh, stream area and enhancing the space around it, uh, we are also proposing, um, the enhanced intersection, um, at the intersection of Foster and, um, forgetting the name of the other street. Han Street, yes. Um, there, that's where you will see that entry plaza area where people can gather. And there is a clear demarcation to get into the park, um, which currently exists. It's just enhanced in, um, more intuitive way. Uh, the bridge will then take visitors into this large, great lawn area. Um, similarly from Mount Merrill, you can experience this great lawn. It is, um, leveled with, uh, some, um, seated areas that are flanking the both sides of the great lawn, which will be needed to make it even on both sides. Um, and then the seat walls can also be used for small concerts. So on one side of that lawn, you will see a small, um, stage area. Um, essentially it is just an open space, um, that can incorporate a temporary stage. Um, or public can, um, use it for small concerts and people can enjoy that from the seat walls as well as from the great lawn area. Moving further west, um, from Rigsby Avenue, um, currently there seems to be a disconnect between how the park, uh, is envisioned from Rigsby and Broadway Street. So our goal is to create more of an, uh, gateway entrance from that area into the park. The, um, proposed building that you see there is a restroom building, uh, with some overhead canopy where people will be entering the space. Um, the meandering ADA access path will take people down into the great, um, lawn area. Um, the current, currently what we are showing as a skate park is the existing footprint of the skate park. The goal will be that eventually again, skate park will need, uh, improvements and updates. Uh, it is again another very well-used space. So the, the recommendation is the city will continue to work with the skate park community. And when the improvements are needed, they will be, uh, provided in this area. With that, I think that is my. Last one. Oh, yeah, inspiration. So just wanted to show some of the images, uh, for the Canopy Plaza area where currently the Sisters Grove is, could be part of a temporary public installation, creating more of that colorful, exciting, fun environment. Um, the great lawn upgrade area where you can see the sloping lawn as well as the tiered walls, uh, that create more of that, uh, leveled space for socialization. Expanded Mount Merrill, um, just a, an inspirational image, but will work with the city to create more of a unique destination for this space as it, as it exists today. The small, um, concert or the stage area that we talked about that will be, uh, closer to the great lawn area. The Festival Street, again, more of a pedestrian-friendly but open to, open to vehicles, uh, street scenario. And then the Market Pavilion Event Space, just more space for vendors to put their tents and have more of a, um, socialization experience for all people here. Thank you so much, I open up for discussion.
Thank you so much for a really wonderful and exciting, uh, presentation on that space. Colleagues, a yield council member, Cook, get us started.
Thank you, um, thank you for that presentation. And, um, I just wanna say that I am very attached to this park. I both had my first date with my fiance and got engaged at Central Park. So, um, yes, I am like, oh, yes, very meaningful, okay. Um, yes, exactly. I'm just kidding, I, I love this idea because I, I, I always think about this when I'm walking from downtown to, um, some of our, uh, like more retail-oriented spaces that are still technically in downtown, but a little bit further north, that there's like literally nothing in between. And so we have this like bullpen and we have this ability to like walk through with alcohol or whatever people do. I don't drink, but I know people do like to do that. Um, but there's really no reason to walk through right now. And so the, I have like dreamed of this space being activated for a long time and I'm really excited about this plan. So here are my thoughts in looking at the, the, um, this outlay that you've given us. The first one is who owns that section of the street?
The street section, is it a?
Dead festival.
City, city street?
Is there any reason why we're not closing it down permanently? Did y'all discuss that possibility?
No.
That a?
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, I don't mean, I don't mean not accessible to emergency vehicles, but I mean, uh, uh, for like ru- normal vehicular transit. Any reason we're not closing it?
Uh, that could be an option, that's something we can discuss with the transportation team. Continue to discuss that as we get into the details of design. Um, right now, the plan is to keep it open and keep that grid open. Um, we will have to anyway keep it accessible for the emergency vehicles.
Sure.
Um, but other than that, if there is more appetite to create, um.
Yeah, I mean.
Measures, yeah.
I, yeah, I know that it is a major thoroughfare. We close it down pretty regularly, at least once a week. Um, people manage to, to move around. Uh, we're also looking at redoing the whole downtown loop, which I think is, uh, one of the main reasons that traffic is sort of a disaster there. Um, but if we're really like serious about encouraging pedestrian space, I, I would like, I would lean towards just cutting it down, um, to no vehicular traffic and allowing, um, other modalities. Um, but of course, leaving space for emergency vehicles. And we've, I've seen streets where this has been done all over the country, so I know that's possible. Uh, so that's something that I'm just thinking about as opposed to installing all of the traffic calming measures, um, that we just let people walk there and, um, and have it permanently closed. Um, I am, I'm, I heard you say water feature in that park and I'm so excited about that idea. I also am curious about shading. It's just getting hotter and hotter. Um, that great lawn space is like lots and lots of open grass. I know that there's like the inspiration photos for the Canopy Plaza like have some shade option, but it doesn't look like on this map that it's like very shaded. Um, so I'm just curious about that part. Cause I just wanna make sure that folks are gonna continue to be able to use the space and stay safe cause it's, starts getting hot now and it stays hot until, I don't know, I swam in December outside this year, so, or last year, so. Um, that's something that I'm thinking about, just like ensuring that folks have access to places to cool down. I love the water feature idea. Um, I really like the stage option and I'm also curious about potentially having like a projector or screening. I know that we've done some of that in Central Park before. And residents have brought this up to me like in so many different capacities. I have people all the time that are asking, cause like, for example, like DC in the Wharf, like they have uh, weekly movie screenings that are free and they are so, so well-attended. People are walking in, they're activating that space, they're u- they're utilizing all of the, there's, um, pop-up, uh, little like restaurant stands and stuff nearby, they're using the space, they're buying things. So that seems like a great option. All the way to like the folks who are just in here, the PAC folks for the disaster preparedness. We're talking about like potentially having screenings on disaster preparedness. So it could be something that like is useful also for the community in the, in an educational sense, sense as well. Um, and then, uh, the only other thing is that I heard you talk about the skate park. And I do feel like, I know that we, in one of our main, let's see, the guiding concept things, you talked about, um, honoring the functions of a farmer's market. Um, to me, I really think that the skate park needs to be held to the same standard as the farmer's market. I do think it is used, um, and a lot of our youth are congregating there and it gives them outlets and options for safe play. Um, and also a lot of adults are out there learning and skating, which is really, really cool. So I, to me, that feels, the farmer's market is super important, but to me, that feels like on par in the level of importance. So those are my initial comments, I think this is amazing. Thank you so much for all y'all's work.
For your comments.
Thank you, council member, and a plaque where you were proposed to.
Yeah, yes, I mean, obviously.
We need to commemorate. Absolutely, what a great story, Councilmember Baker.
Thank you so much and thank you for all of the work that you've put into this and, um, Durham Central Park, um, Durham Central Park Board and all the work. And the many years that they've put into, into this, um, I think it's a, a really great plan. I mean, it's a great city deserving of a great space like this. And we look around to our neighbors and Cary and Raleigh and Dix Park and all of the work that's going into building great parks. Of course, we are also doing that in other places, um, in our city as well, but this is such a central place. And, um, I mean, who doesn't have, maybe not as, as, as amazing stories, but who doesn't have at least some stories to tell from, from this very space, um, the skate park there? I mean, that's one of the most diverse spaces in our cities, that skate park. I mean, it's fantastic. You get great views, I love the eastern overlook, restrooms. I mean, wh- who, who doesn't want more public restrooms? Um, it's something that is, that is constantly requested from people. Um, and then the upgrades and, and everything else that we're seeing here, I mean, just very beautiful and visionary. Um, Festival Street, I don't think anyone would doubt that such a, such a modification to Foster Street is necessary. Um, I like the idea of, of permanently, permanently closing it off. I think that, um, changing the consistency of, of the, the surface, um, so that it appears to be for pedestrians and then makes automobiles, makes drivers kind of question whether they're allowed to be there or not, is also a, a, a good, a good treatment and potential bollards, you know, going up and down. Um, and actually, as you go down Foster Street and it turns into Corcoran Street, that isn't, that is, colleagues, a place that I would like to discuss at some point, uh, closing off the street at CCB Plaza there for a future conversation. Um, I'm, a couple of questions. One is, um, thinking about hookups for like food trucks, um, so that people aren't running on generators? Is that something that, uh, some thought has been put into?
Yes, so the plan will be, um, when we have the Foster Street closures along that sidewalk, we can have some connections that are running parallel to the sidewalk there so people can hook up. Um, electrical, um, outlets will be provided along that edge.
And I know transportation has been looking at, um, bike lanes along this street. I, I just wanna make sure that, um, and I assume this is happening, that there's conversation between transportation and, and this.
Correct, yeah, yeah, that's a ongoing conversation. I think we need to continue to, uh, make that, uh, regular until we decide on what the final plan looks like.
Cool.
Yeah.
And I know, uh, and we're not there yet, obviously, but, um, I wonder if, if there's been initial thinking into phasing or does this all hap- is the vision that this would all happen at once, assuming it's funding and then Durham Central Park Board? I know that at some, at one point, there was conversation about cost sharing. Are those on, I assume those are sort of ongoing conversations, but can you tell us where, where we are in that?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So I would like to give, uh, you know, commend the Durham Central Park Board. They have been very committed to the project. Um, we have already started discussing some of the phasing scenarios with them. Um, and the po- plan will be to incorporate some of the low-hanging fruits in the park as, uh, some low-cost, uh, projects that can be undertaken quickly. Uh, whereas, uh, some of the larger features like the, the great lawn and that surrounding one big parcel could become part of one, one big project that can be, um, you know, undertaken as, as one phase. Um, so the way, we discussed, um, three phases for the three separate parcels. So the first phase would be the gardens area on the western side, farmer's market, Canopy Plaza, Sister Cities Grove, and then Foster Street could be the second phase. And then great lawn area, skate park, Mount Merrill, that could be the third phase.
Well, thank you. Uh, and last thing, um, you know, great spaces defined by their edges. We've got Foster on the Park, Liberty Warehouse and, um, the Vega, which are fair, you know, fairly recently, um, constructed. And I guess this is a gripe of mine, is that they're, they're very hard edges, with the exception of the corner of Foster on the park that's, um, got that permeability with, um, the bar that's there. Um, and then the Vega on the corner there down by where you're showing, uh, envisioning the, the wetland there. Um, but there's a lot of, a lot of blank space along those walls, um, which is unfortunate. But I wonder if there's been some thinking about softening those edges, creating a little more permeability, um, more comfort for a person who might be standing or walking along, um, in that, in those areas.
Right, that's a great point. Um, the pixel wall area, um, for the Liberty Warehouse, um, that we haven't changed that area just yet. So there is still that interactive feature that can continue to work. On the southern side at the Vega, there are a lot of utilities, um, on their building side and that's the back of their building. Um, however, with the butterfly gardens and some of those garden areas, we might be able to create more of an inviting landscape, um, that can soften that feature. Um, and then up at the, um, Sister Cities Grove, hoping that, um, the canopy and enhanced public art feature will help us, um, blur the line, hard lines and create more, um, inward focus in the park.
Cool, cool. Well, that's it for me, I, again, just a very beautiful plan, um, just have to figure out how to pay for it. Um, so thank you so much for the presentation and thank you for speaking with us.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. Councilmember Cabir, please.
Thank you, thank you for the great presentation. Um, I like everything I'm seeing, obviously, yeah, how, how does it get paid for is always the question. I will, we'll figure that out at some point. Um, the, a couple of things, um, the, is there, like, there's been talk about additional skate park features in other parks. And so it was just, and this is really a question for staff, I mean, this is really it and it's old. Um, so, uh, and I, I will just say, I mean, my kids kinda live there. So, you know, the I do worry a little bit about, and this happened with the Vega, you know. As the area has changed over, the kind of interaction between the skate park and the park, you know, I think. I just am going to name, I am a little bit concerned as we make it nicer. Will the neighbors and others who are using that tolerate the, right? I mean, the, you know, so I I I want to just ensure that we don't. Push if we're push those kids out and if it's determined that it's not a great space for it. That we're giving an amenity that is better and as centrally located. So that's really just for staff to figure out and they've heard me say this for years now. So I just, you know, we're going to enhance the water features. It's going to be more of a family friendly and you definitely see all kinds of age groups. But at a certain time at night, it's not all kind of age groups at that skate park. And so just want to name that. And then I would love to have an understanding, I mean, there's two other city owned, key city owned properties there. The what was Substation Five, which is now community development. At some point, that was named as a potential, that's really the only place we could put affordable housing on that side of downtown. And so again, that interaction with the park and eventually hopefully housing. And a great building is key, however we move. And then the DAP, right? Which is, again, you're going to connect to it really well. There's another street you're going to have to cross. I don't want to lose sight of those other things that we own already and how we're going to redevelopment, redevelop them. And make sure that whatever happens here flows really well and that it's seamless. And lovely, we have the rail trail going through here. So I think this is great. I just want to think about that comprehensive view. And how we're using all of our city assets as effectively as possible, knowing that this is more like long, long term. But I'm pretty sure we're in the middle of a DAP study. So don't want to lose sight of that and the connectivity from here to that. Everything looks great. I love it. I hope the water feature downtown. I lived in Chicago for a number of years. The face statue, everyone goes to the face statues. It it activates that whole space. It's a great place when it's hot for families to cool down. You see literally every kind of person you can possibly imagine. So I think it would be an incredible opportunity to have something similar where. Everybody has a memory of, you know, that water feature in some capacity. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Colleagues, Councilmember Marist.
Just real quick, thanks. I had my thanks to the mechanics team. I know we had a great conversation at the Recreation Advisory Committee. They're also really excited about this. You've done a great job. And I think it's, yeah, it's it's on us to sort of figure out the next steps and make it all happen. But you've kind of teed it up well for us, so thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good for you.
Thank you. I'll just add. I do want to know if there's more connecting or not just to the DAP, but also to Duke Guide of Fitness. Going all the way across and then making sure that the signage is included in this conversation, like what signage looks like. Especially for people who are not from Durham visiting, especially with. A lot of folks come visit CCB Plaza because of what happens there. And I think they'll be coming across Foster Street. Into all of like all of all the way into Trinity Street. And so what that looks like, if you're on the scooter or the bike or walking, is very different signage. It's not just street sign and it's not just the like DPR sign. Being mindful like how far away this is, kind of like that kind of. You know, it takes fifteen minutes to walk to this part or that kind of signage. Looking for, and then. Ah, there was something else. Oh, and then just noted, I'm I'm on the side of the farmer's market skate park kind of go together kind of thing. So I would really be disappointed if we lost the skate park there. Feel like that's been like a really good space for the kids to know that they are welcome downtown. And if you move it or did displace them, that would feel like a slight as they've been moved from Main Street. I, also, just one more. Just some, just keeping in mind how the food truck situation goes, like figuring out spaces that are like, even if it is Festival Street. Closed off, making sure that food trucks can also, not just emergency vehicles, but food trucks can also get in there.
That's a good point. Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. Sure, go ahead.
I just wanted to say also, I'm in real support about changing, I mean, that I I have to drive that road all the time. It's closed so often. It's not just once a week, it's closed all the time. So I think residents are pretty used to it and and moving us in that direction. I've definitely been a council member who's like, let's figure out how we can be more car free downtown, especially as we expand transit. If we're going to have a great free bus system, then we really need to be encouraging folks to take it and not necessarily driving downtown. And having, like, we talk about foot traffic all the time. That is one of the most activated spaces downtown on the regular and it's because people don't have to worry about cars on the road. So not just that corridor, I think we should get there, but lots of our corridors downtown. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I would say to that point, whatever the conversation is around the loop. And figuring out that connection is going to be important. So I know that we're talking about parks, but that transportation side has to be incorporated.
Good point. Thank you.
Colleagues, thank you. I associate myself with all of the excitement about this really ambitious and beautiful plan. Councilmember Caballero said something about neighbors there that kind of activated the thought. I remember an issue we had with drummers in Central Park and some of the residents down there. So I I hope our neighbors that are watching this and and see the trajectory on understand that. Living downtown in a major American city brings urban feel and vibe in a heartbeat. We that this it's it's cities are noisy, cities are vibrant. And if you want to live downtown in a major American city, this this is what's coming. And this is what it sounds like, full disclosure, transparency, truth and advertising. So I'm excited. Go ahead, go ahead, sis.
And I I would I would be remiss if I didn't say, if there's any way to factor in showers and locker storage in some way, shape or form. For those who are unhoused, I think that would be a beneficial use in the site.
Thank you for that. And finally, just just to wax philosophical a little bit about, I I noticed one of the the Inspirations was a great lawn upgrade shot from New York. I grew up using this park from time to time, when 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 we can get into Manhattan. And and the term Central Park, of course, carries a lot of baggage with those of us that have read Robert Moses and understand the. The the development of park space in our country. So it's kind of a full circle moment to be talking about a central park in Durham that is not displacing people, that is not based upon dispossessing people. But but a space that is accessible and 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 equitable. It's a wonderful reclamation, I think, of the term Central Park. So really, really beautiful presentation today and a really great trajectory for our city. It's an exciting time to be part of the Durham fabric, the Durham story. So thank you so much. Colleagues, if that's it, did you have a final comment?
No, I'm saying thank you so much. Appreciate all of your comments and the excitement.
Thank you for exciting us today. Thank you. Colleagues, we have come to the end of our published agenda and our final presentation of the day. I'm going to yield now to the city manager to settle the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor Partem. I have items one through thirteen on consent. Items fifteen and sixteen, GBA public hearings.
All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to settle the agenda.
Again.
Hear a motion to second, all in favor? Those opposed? All right, with that, it is three eighteen on April twenty fourth. We are adjourned. God bless Durham.